This is a story about connections. Connections between conservation and economic development. Between a community's appearance and its quality of life. Between the man-made environment and the natural environment. And perhaps most important of all, between people and the places they live. Thirty years ago, the former Secretary of Interior Stuart Rüdell wrote something that is sadly more true today than ever. "America today stands on a pinnacle of wealth and power, and yet we live in a land of vanishing beauty, of increasing ugliness, of shrinking open space, of an overall environment diminished daily by noise, pollution, and blight." Please don't misunderstand, America is the world's leader in environmental protection. Over the last thirty years, we've passed many laws to reduce air and water pollution, clean up toxic waste, protect our sand dunes and wetlands. We've encouraged energy conservation and recycling, added thousands of buildings and monuments to the National Register of Historic Places, and millions of acres to our state and national parks. But despite these successes, the special character of America's small towns and our countryside has been disappearing faster than ever. At the same time, we've been saving some landmarks, we've been losing the landscape that gives these landmarks their larger sense of meaning. And while we've been cleaning up air and water pollution, we've been losing our sense of place. I mean, if you were suddenly dropped along a road outside of almost any American city, you wouldn't have the slightest idea where you were, because it all looks exactly the same. You wouldn't know if you were in Albany or Allentown, Providence or Pittsburgh, Charlotte or Cincinnati. As the famous Western author Wallace Stegner once wrote, "If you don't know where you are, you don't know who you are." All of us have a fundamental need for a sense of orientation, a sense of roots, a sense of place. What is sense of place? First, it's what makes your hometown different from my hometown. Second, and perhaps more important, it's what makes our physical surroundings worth caring about. In many parts of America, we are suffering the social consequences of living in places that simply aren't worth caring about. For all the improvements we've made in cleaning the air and water, building roads and schools, faster computers, many people still ask, "Is this all there is? Can't our communities be more distinctive, more livable, more beautiful?" A few years ago, Victoria Tashinkle, the former Secretary of Natural Resources for the state of Florida, said, "I think we can probably take care of pollution-related problems in Florida, but even if we do, I'm not sure this is going to be a very nice place to live because of the density of population and the lack of sense of community." Florida could end up as just one convenience store after another. Her words are true for cities and towns all over America. Growth is both certain and desirable, but the destruction of community character and natural resources that too often accompanies growth is not inevitable. Progress does not demand degraded surroundings. Communities can grow without destroying the things that people love. The real questions are not whether your town will grow, because it will, or whether it will change, because it will. The real questions are how. How will it change and how will it grow? As our communities expand, we need to plan for growth by carefully planning and managing the patterns of development. To accomplish this, communities must consider three things. Where do you put development? How do you arrange it? And what does it look like? Here are some examples of what is meant by patterns of development. This is the cornfield at Antietam, Maryland, the site of the bloodiest day in the history of the United States. During the Civil War, 23,000 Americans fell here in a September afternoon in 1862. If you visit this place, you can almost visualize the waves of infantry moving across the field, sense the urgency and how history was changed there that day. Yet the National Trust for Historic Preservation once listed this site as one of the nation's ten most endangered historic places. It's off the list today, thanks to the hard work of many people, but what was it in danger of? If you travel 100 miles south to Spotsylvania County, Virginia, you'll find the site of the South's greatest victory in the Civil War, the Battle of Chancellorsville. This is the Salem Church that was a key feature during the fighting, a makeshift Confederate fortress. After the battle, it served as a hospital for the wounded of both sides. Lovingly restored, the church is not only a national historic landmark, but a classic example of saving a structure and losing a place. This is why the battlefield at Antietam was in danger. So what's wrong with this picture? There are better places in America to put a shopping center than in the middle of our historic and hallowed grounds. The point is, some places are better for development than others. The first principle of better development is planning where you should and should not develop. Every community needs a blueprint for how it wants to grow. Two tools used for this are a conservation plan and an economic development plan. These allow us to have both conservation and development, and to help communities preserve their identities. But part of the problem is how we think about conservation and development. This is a view of the Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and this, a town just outside the park. Sometimes we think there are only two choices: either preserve the land or develop all of it. Either create a park with nobody living in it, or allow ugly, environmentally insensitive development right next door, even though the landscape there may be just as outstanding. But these aren't the only choices we have. We have a third choice. We can have growth and development that respects and enhances the character of our communities, and that complements the quality of our landscape. This concept has different names: sustainable development, smart growth, but it's really about development that's good for the environment, good for business, and good for the community. Let's consider a few examples, starting with something very simple: residential street design. If you're a developer, the most expensive part of the development process is building the streets. So let's look at this subdivision in Wisconsin, where the street is 24 feet across from curb to curb. In this Virginia subdivision, on the other hand, the street is 40 feet across. On which street would you rather live? On which street do you think the houses are more affordable? Which street is better for the environment? And which street is safer for children? First, compare the cost of the houses. If you add 16 feet of pavement to the width of the street, you increase the cost of the houses along that street by thousands of dollars. So more pavement means less affordable housing. More pavement also means more soil erosion, more sedimentation, and more water pollution going into our rivers and streams. And as far as safety is concerned, the 24-foot-wide street is four times safer than the 40-foot-wide street. Why? Because the wider the streets are, the faster the cars go. So being more flexible on residential street standards is good for business, good for the environment, and good for the community. Now think about trees. Here are two streets with identical houses on each. Which street do you think has higher property values? Which street has lower utility bills? And on which street would you rather live? Studies show that developed lots with trees sell for an average of 20% to 25% more than similar-sized lots without trees. The temperature here on a hot summer day can be six degrees higher than the temperature here on that same day. As it turns out, dollars do grow on trees. In short, trees are good for business, good for the environment, and good for the community. What about shopping centers? Would you prefer to shop in a center heavily landscaped with trees and bushes? Or would you prefer to shop here? Well, look at what happened in Baldwin County, the southernmost county in Alabama, on the shore of the Mobile Bay. Baldwin County was once a very hard place to get to until Interstate 10 was built. In a short time, investors started buying up land along other highways, cutting down the live oak trees and replacing them with strip malls. But many of the residents didn't like what was happening to their trees, so they proposed the first law in the state to preserve large trees, specifically in the parking lots of commercial buildings. Those who objected to this regulation said things like, "Nobody will go to the grocery store if there's a tree in front of it." So the county conducted a public opinion poll, and asked their citizens if they would prefer to shop at a center heavily landscaped with trees and bushes, or one without such landscaping. What happened? By a wide margin, people said they preferred trees to asphalt, and they passed that regulation, the first one in Alabama's history. This was the beginning of Baldwin County thinking about the relationship between community character and economic development. Now let's consider the gateway to a community, its front door. Just like with meeting a person, a good first impression is important, a bad one hard to change. So would you rather visit Franklin, Tennessee, or Midfield, Alabama? Which one looks like a community with a sense of pride and a sense of place? Which one looks like a place you would rather spend time and money in? Every day, people make decisions about where to live, where to invest, where to vacation, and where to retire, based on what our communities look like. The image of your community is fundamentally important to its economic well-being. Think about visiting a new town or city, for instance. The more one community looks like every place else in America, the less reason there is to visit. On the other hand, the more a community does to enhance and preserve what makes it unique, the more reason there is to go there. That's because tourism is about seeking out those places in the world that are different, unusual, and unique. If every place was just like every place else, there'd be no reason to go anyplace. That's why the image of a community is fundamentally important to its economic well-being. Do you think tourists would rather see scenic views that look like this, or scenic views that look like this? As the Urban Land Institute once noted, "Housing, hotels, and offices with scenic views always command premium prices. The better the view, the higher the price." Now think about where you live. Before World War II, America had a model for development that worked for over 300 years. We called it a town. But after World War II, people decided to rearrange things. While we still have buildings, we now throw shopping centers over here, and we put schools over there, and put our houses over here. The result: we have to drive everywhere for everything. Recently, though, a national survey showed most people would prefer to shop in a town center if they had a choice. As a result, we're actually building town centers again, for the first time in 50 years. An example is Cascade Village in Loudoun County, Virginia. This would have been a strip shopping center just five or six years ago. As another example, this is Barnes &amp; Noble Superbook Store, located on a busy highway just outside of Washington, D.C. Notice the big parking lot in front. It's similar to what you'd see in strip shopping centers all over America. On the other hand, this is Barnes &amp; Noble Store located in downtown Bethesda, Maryland. It's built right on the sidewalk, and while there's parking in the neighborhood, there's no parking lot directly in front of the building. So which one do you think makes more money? The one with the big parking lot in front, or this one? Surprising to many, the downtown store makes 15% more per square foot than the one on the strip. And the reasons? Well, think about how you get to these two stores. The only way to get to the one on the strip is to drive. But there are more ways to get to the other store. You can walk, because it's located in a neighborhood, or you could ride your bike, or take the subway, or you could drive. And when you do get here, you'll find yourself in a real neighborhood where people hang out, walk around, and window shop. How many people do you know who go to strip shopping centers to hang out? In short, merchants in town centers are more successful, because people spend more time on Main Street. In fact, the idea of a Main Street is the single hottest retailing concept in America today, a vision we abandoned 50 years ago. People are still drawn to these Main Streets, because they're natural gathering places where you can enjoy a cup of coffee, read a magazine, meet your friends, or window shop. In addition, many communities are realizing why it's important to identify and preserve their historic buildings, neighborhoods, and landscapes. Because they physically link us to our past, tell us who we are and where we came from. Preserving historic buildings is good for the heart and soul of a community, but it's also good for the pocketbook of a community. Let's look at a small example. This used to be the fire station in a small Midwestern town. When it became obsolete as a fire station, it was turned into a pizza parlor, but sales were low, so the owner of the restaurant restored the appearance of the building, physically linking his customers to the roots in the past. What else happened? Within the first year, pizza sales went up by 75%, showing how preservation can be enormously good for the bottom line. Or consider some larger examples, such as the Riverwalk in San Antonio, Texas. This is one of the nation's leading tourist attractions, and the basis of the city's billion-dollar tourism industry. What most visitors don't know, however, is that at one point, the city thought so little of this small river, they tried to put it underground, into a culvert. In Seattle, Pike Place Market is the epitome of the city's working waterfront. Today, it is the single leading destination in Washington, visited by 11 million people a year. Yet less than 30 years ago, the city seriously suggested demolishing the Pike Place Market to create a parking lot in its place. You can have all the parking in the world, but if you have nothing to do, then why would you want to go there? And in Florida, you'll find the Art Deco Historic District in South Miami Beach. It's the largest collection of Art Deco buildings in the United States. Once again, all were scheduled for demolition. Yet today, people come from all over the world to visit this place. While most people are in favor of preserving the best of their past, they also need to think about what's being built today that will be worth preserving tomorrow. In other words, what buildings will you and your children fight to save 50 years from now? This is an important question, because 80% of everything ever built in America has been constructed since the end of World War II. And as Winston Churchill once said, "We shape our buildings, and then our buildings shape us." Meaning the physical character of our communities affects our sense of community. But it's hard to have a sense of community in a parking lot. So how can we get new buildings to enhance the character of our communities? Does every franchise and chain store in America have to look exactly alike? Of course not. New buildings can be designed to fit in with the character of a community, and can complement the quality of the surrounding landscape. Yes, that's a new McDonald's. It's in a house that was built in 1873 in the small town of New Hyde Park, New York. Perspective brides even come here to pose for their bridal photographs. Or consider this McDonald's in Stowe, Vermont. Why does it look like a typical New England-style building? Well, because it's in New England. We live in a nation of highly varied history, climate, culture, and terrain, so why shouldn't the buildings in one part of America look different from buildings in another part? Shouldn't buildings in New England look different from buildings in the Southwest? The Southwest different from the Southeast? The Southeast different from the Midwest? Shouldn't buildings in a small town like Lake Forest, Illinois, be different from buildings in a big city like St. Louis, Missouri? Yes, that's also a McDonald's, at the foot of the famous Gateway Arch. It was built by a smart developer who realized that when fast food was no longer the novelty, design could be. He realized that our image of St. Louis is painted by its past: images of the Mississippi River, Mark Twain, and riverboats, thus a McDonald's on a riverboat. The point is, if communities accept off-the-shelf corporate cookie-cutter architecture, they'll get it 100% of the time. On the other hand, if they insist on something better, something that fits with their community, they'll get that 100% of the time. Do national franchises and chain stores like to do this? No, not particularly. But they'll do whatever they have to do to be in an economically profitable location. For instance, this is the McDonald's in Freeport, Maine. The company bought this house in the 1970s with the intention of tearing it down and putting up a typical suburban-style McDonald's. But the town said, "No, we want you to restore that house." McDonald's sued the town and lost. Now the company promotes this restaurant as an example of their good community stewardship. But they'll only do this when cities and towns are wise enough to say, "First, we want a building that looks like it belongs in our community, and not just any place USA." Of course, the idea of community pride and place can apply to more than just buildings. Let's think about tourism again, with this ad out of an airline magazine. It says a chain of hotels should reflect the city they are located in, and not each other. Here's a chain motel in Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, home to the country's largest Amish population. When visitors arrive, they find busy commercial strips with look-alike motels, instead of what they imagine the countryside would be: rolling green hills, white farmhouses with red barns, small old-fashioned town centers. Elkhart County, Indiana, on the other hand, is also home to a large Amish population. A few years ago, they sent a delegation to Lancaster for ideas on how to attract tourists. They came back with two big ideas. First, establish a land trust to preserve open land. Second, develop design guidelines for new tourism support facilities, giving developers a strong suggestion of what ought to be done. The result? This is one of Elkhart's new chain motels. As you can see, they learned from Lancaster's mistakes. Here's an off-the-shelf 7-Eleven compared to this new 7-Eleven. Or consider gas stations. The canopy of this one looks like a spacecraft. True, canopies prevent rain from reaching the customer, but they come in all shapes and styles. Here's one in Asheville, North Carolina, that fits right in with the character of the community. Or how about this one? This new gas station is located in Waitsfield, a small town in Vermont. Notice how it looks like a country store. That's because it's in the country. How about chain drugstores like Rite Aid, CVS, Eckert's, Brooks? Here's a typical, off-the-shelf Rite Aid, but this new one, located in Camden, Maine, was designed to look like a typical New England store, because once again, it's in New England. Notice how this Rite Aid in Washington, D.C., blends in with its neighbors. Or this one in Lake Placid, New York, with stone on the bottom, articulated roofline, and wood siding. Such designs are common in the Adirondacks. And what about the big-box retailers like a Kmart or Walmart? Here's a typical Kmart. This on one hand is the Kmart in Jackson, Wyoming. This is a community trying to preserve its Western heritage, so this Kmart, with clock towers on each end, articulated rooflines, and a wooden front, looks like it belongs. Sometimes people say, "It's too late for our community. We already have too much clutter." Actually, it's never too late. Community character deteriorates slowly over time, but it can get better in small steps. For instance, this used to be a McDonald's in Asheville, North Carolina. Now there's a new McDonald's built on the site of the old one. This is a city that's decided that community character is important, so they're improving it, one building at a time. Your community can get better, too: one street, one building, and one development at a time. The famous oceanographer Jacques Cousteau used to say, "People will save what they love." But how can we create the sense of love and caring for our communities? One way is through education and interpretation. Every community has a story to describe these traditions through historic markers, interpretive displays, and public art. For example, this is the Chisholm Trail mural in Fort Worth, Texas, which tells the story of how cattle drives were so important at the founding of Fort Worth. And this is the family album of Tacoma Park, Maryland. Every one of these pictures is important to that town's history. Once, Spokane, Washington, once manufactured the famous Radio Flyer wagons. What do they have there now? This piece of playground equipment, a piece of public art that physically connects people to their city's past. Or how about Clanton, Alabama, the state's Peach Capital, where they used their water tower to create a sense of place and tell a story about their town. Signs tell us much about the character of a community, too. Outdoor signs are important, because they give us direction and needed information. A business sign can be colorful, decorative, even distinguished. All too often, however, signs are oversized, poorly planned, and badly located. They're also too numerous. So what's wrong with this picture? Three things: it's ugly, it's expensive, and it doesn't work. Signs project the image of a community faster than almost anything else. These are before-and-after pictures of the same place. Think about the images the signs project. Do you want the image of your community to be classy or trashy, tacky or plain, special or ordinary, ugly or beautiful? When you look at this shopping center in Highlands, North Carolina, does it make you want to live there? When you see the sign in this other town, do you feel like you'd like to vacation here? Image is fundamentally important to the economic well-being of our communities. This is obviously a community that didn't pay attention to its image. On the other hand, communities that get more investment, more business, and more visitors pay attention to their appearance. Another aspect of signs is effectiveness. Imagine one store owner getting a big sign, then a competitor getting a bigger sign, then a third person getting an even bigger sign. Before you know it, you'd be advertising to airplanes instead of people. A cluttered commercial strip with huge signs, flags, and banners like this is ineffective, because they prevent you from finding what you're looking for. It's almost impossible to absorb the overload of information on a cluttered commercial strip like this. But when you turn down the volume, every voice becomes distinct. In short, businesses do a better job of selling, because people can see what they're looking for. But what exactly makes one community successful and another unsuccessful? Successful communities are good places to live, work, and invest, because they do a few simple things. They make an inventory of their assets and create a vision for the future. They build all their plans, whether it's a tourism plan, an economic development plan, or a land use plan, around their assets. They use education, incentives, and voluntary initiatives, not just regulations. They pick and choose among developments, realizing not all development is created equal. They cooperate with resource managers for mutual benefit. They consider what a community looks like. They have a quality-of-life lobby. Let's look at these ideas in more detail. Successful communities look at what they have to offer and build their plans around their assets. Sometimes assets are obvious, such as those found in Boulder, Colorado, or Annapolis, Maryland, which has an obvious architectural legacy in a beautiful harbor. But sometimes these assets are not so obvious. Lowell, Massachusetts, is an example. It was an industrial town of worn-out and abandoned mill buildings that used its architectural heritage to its advantage, creatively reusing the mill buildings for commercial space, museums, and housing. Successful communities use education, incentives, and voluntary initiatives, not just regulation. The town of Pella, Iowa, for instance, gives new developers a handbook about why the architectural character of that town is important. They do this, because they want new franchises, chain stores, and big-box retailers to fit in. Successful communities also consider what they look like. The cover of the Vermont State Tourist brochure boasts that there are no billboards in the state. Why? Vermont is one of the five heavily tourism-dependent states that have removed all their billboards, because they found that it is one of the most important things they can do to strengthen the tourism industry. Petersburg, Virginia, on the other hand, could have been the Williamsburg of the Civil War, but it's not, because they didn't pay any attention to what they look like. Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, is another community that thinks aesthetics is important. Since there were no utility wires running through the battlefield in 1863, the community worked to bury five miles of utility wires through that battlefield, restoring its sense of place. So what do you want your community to look like in 20 years? If you don't ask that question, it'll end up looking like any place USA. You see, there really are only two kinds of change in America: unplanned change or planned change. Failing to plan simply means planning to fail. Finally, let's think about the social and psychological value of the ideas presented today. Why is it that people feel a sense of loss, like losing a loved one or a friend, when a grove of trees is cut down, an historic building demolished, or a scenic view obliterated? It's not because we can't plant new trees or build new buildings. It's because our sense of identity is tied in a very profound way to special buildings, places, and views. Each has a rich symbolic importance, which contributes to our sense of identity and well-being. In fact, long ago, an ancient Roman statesman said, "Cities should preserve the visible symbols of their identity to give their citizens a sense of security in a changing world." 2,000 years later, anthropologist Margaret Mead said almost exactly the same thing: "The destruction of things that are familiar and important causes great anxiety in people." Economic development and environmental quality aside, what we're often trying to preserve is memory, an attempt to keep a mental image of familiar and accustomed places that make us feel comfortable and secure. The justification for preserving the special places of any community have as much to do with our need for psychological stability and cultural continuity, as they have to do with beauty, ecology, or economics. Our communities can grow without destroying the things that people love. The landscapes of our states and regions, the countryside, the cities and the small towns are worth preserving, not just because they're fragile and beautiful, and rich in cultural and natural resources, but because they help us define who we are as a nation. but because they help us define who we are as a nation.
Okay, go ahead and reconvene. Planning Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, October 3. We just concluded item 9.1 video presentations. Any comments from commissioners for the record? Like to get on the record? I'll just start by saying, when they talked about natural resources within a community, the first thing that came to my mind, of course, was Hangtown Creek. And, you know, what can we do as part of planning and future efforts to increase, bring the creek more into a formal aspect of the city? It is a good presentation. I haven't seen it before. A lot of its stuff. All right, here are no other comments. We'll go ahead and move on to item 10. Environmental assessments, starting with item 10.1. This is a site plan review 23-13 for the Bank of America. Exterior lighting. Consideration of the site planning application within the central business district zone to modify the existing exterior of lighting for an existing professional office. That would be the Bank of America building replacement. Existing surface canopy fixture to match existing. Addition of three new surface canopy fixtures. Replacement of eight existing recessed canopy fixtures to match existing. Replacement of fixtures on existing three poles. Installation of two new poles with fixtures. Replacement of seven existing wall fixtures to match existing. Addition of two new wall fixtures. Removal padding for new wall. Mouth fixtures with three floodlights. And we find the project categorically exempt from CECL. And Kristen, you have the staff report.
Thank you. So, Site Plan Review 23-13 is a request from the applicant to revise the existing exterior lighting of the parcel addressed 3024 Sacramento Street. The parcel is located in the city's Central Business District Zone near the corner of Sacramento Street and Pacific Street, and is developed with a single-story Bank of America building, parking lot, land, and charging stations. It should be noted that the Bank of America building is located in the central parcel. However, there is a second neighboring parcel that provides additional rooming for the bank. SPR 23-13 was only to approve modifications on the parcel with the bank building, Construction of the bank building was approved under SPR 1973, which was one of six site plan reviews given the same number. As such, staff has provided the project case number of SPR 23-13. Additionally, as the initial approval did not include conditions but rather improved elevations and site plan, staff requested SPR 1973 of the Bank of America be made null and void as private elevations and site plan superseded by sheets LU-3, LU-9, LU-10, and LU-11 in the applicant's report. Staff would be willing to clarify on this request by staff prior to the meeting. Opened, this would make future applications and appropriations in this parcel consistent with the current site plan procedures. The project would replace in kind one surface canopy fixture, eight recessed canopy fixtures, three pole fixtures, and seven wall fixtures. Further, the project also includes the addition of two new poles, two new poles, three new surface canopy fixtures, and two new pole fixtures. The locations of the proposed changes are shown on page four of the staff report and in attachment two on sheet LU-3, overall site plan in the applicant's report. Tape one on page three of the staff report identifies each fixture, whether new or in kind, and the commodity. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that the project is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, Site Plan Review, 10-4-16, Exterior Lighting Regulations, and 10-5-14, Central Business District Zone. The project is further consistent with the Community Design Section of the General Plan and consistent with the City of Placerville Development Guide. Further, based on staff review, the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, CECL Guidelines, Section 15301. And that project includes the repair and minor alteration of an existing private structure that shall result in no expansion of the existing use. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the CECL findings from the site plan review request, adopt the findings in support of SPR 23-13, including staff's recommended additional finding identified in the memorandum dated October 3, 2023, which reads, "Find SPR 1973 null and void, superseded by sheets LU-3, LU-9, LU-10, and LU-11" of the submitted findings. And conditionally approve the project based on the findings included, oh, sorry, based on the findings included in the staff report and standard to the recommended conditions of approval provided in attachment one of the staff report. This includes staff support on SPR 23-13.
Thank you. Still got a question? I have one. Quick one. Was there anywhere in the materials submitted that gave us a complete picture of what the new poles, lighting? There are lighting fixtures, correct? The two new lighting poles?
No.
I couldn't find anything that showed me this is exactly what it's going to look like, particularly in context with the sub-plan. Did I miss? That is a question. Did I miss it?
I believe that the pole is meant to be exactly matching with.
With already there? Oh, that was a... Quick one. Commissioner Carter?
Yes, I'm going to switch about the landscaping. So on page five, you address that the maintenance to be retained is therefore outside of staff's analysis. Can you explain why we're not requiring a landscaping plan on this? I looked by the site today, and it has pretty extensive landscaping, some of which is dead and dying and the tensions. What's the reasoning behind that requirement to submit a landscaping plan?
I don't believe we require the applicant to submit a landscaping plan. I think we do have a condition of approval that they replace some of the trees that had died on earth and landscaping. So this does give us a need to revisit the landscaping and make sure they're consistent with the adopted landscaping. The landscaping isn't before you to amend or change, just the lighting. However, we do check all the conditions of approval for the site plan review. We did find that there were deficiencies in landscaping, and so required them to bring it up and make it consistent with.
Understood. So it does exist, it's just not within our purview. Okay.
To that point, then, though, there is a landscaping plan that came with the original approvals decades ago, then, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so if we find, as Commissioner Carter observed, that it's not being upheld, then what do we need to do? That comes forth as an issue. Is that right?
Yes.
And addition to the trees, so the trees, we'll bring those back. My guess is they probably took them up because they died.
That's right.
Yeah, okay, and they just didn't replace them. So we'll get those brought back in. But if they're not in compliance with our landscaping agreement, it wouldn't be something we would address here tonight. It becomes a forest issue, right?
That's correct.
Okay, correct. Maybe we'll bring that for our attention. Other questions by commissioners? All right, we're seeing none. We'll open up the public hearing. Is the applicant or their agent in the house this evening?
They are not.
They are not?
The agent for the project is panel applications. They're based in Aradona, so they're not able to be here today.
Okay, so we don't have anyone to answer questions. All righty. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this project? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission board. Discussion of possible action. I thank you. While you all know how irritating when applicant doesn't show. In this particular project, I think it's relatively minor straightforward, so I'm not going to profit like that usually. All right, Commissioner Carter, you have the.
I did have one more question. When the drawing document was given, there indicates on here new security fence. There's even color. I looked through all the house and I couldn't find it. There's nothing. It's just carried forward with some old map or maybe error. Because there's, I don't see any new security fence in the drawings or in review.
So, does it say on the plans?
Yeah, it's on the picture of the plans. So red indicates new security fence. So I have a drawing. It doesn't show where it's put. But it's not. There's no red on it. It's there.
So staff and I have access to security fence. We are only, we all have it lighting. Can you tell us what page she's on?
Every page says, everything's in pitch. In the upper right-hand corner, in the upper right-hand corner of each one of the LU's, it's in red.
So we see it in the left, but not on the right.
Yeah, that was my idea. So I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't.
So I think, yeah, we're all. We would require.
Excellent. With regards to the memorandum of October 3, the language that you want, I'd like to offer a minor editorial change if I could. So you have that last sentence superseded by sheets LU-3, 9, 10 through 11, right? And I just want to make the change and have it read in LU-11 of the, insert the word, plans submitted, strike plans there as part of this application. So that it's absolutely clear what we're talking about. There wasn't necessarily an access to the application with what's there. I don't, and I think it's the same intent, but to me it was a little bit clearer. That's all right. Hopefully my co-commissioners will go ahead and read that again. Just the clarity. It was a superseded by sheets LU-3, LU-9, LU-10, and LU-11 of the plan submitted as part of this application. Other comments by commissioners? Now, the condition for the replacement of the two trees, that's called out specifically, right? And that also falls in with the landscaping agreement in general.
I guess I just wanted to make sure that since we're knowing the original project, that we're doing that because there were no specific conditions attached. So that landscaping plan came in sometime in the future under a different application?
Yeah.
Yes.
SPR 23-13 was just plans and informations. And so the reason we gave it a new number is for it to be null and void is because there are six other planning approvals that have the same case number. And so it becomes relatively confusing.
Yeah, thanks for making this. I just want to be absolutely clear that what we're saying is all of the prior conditions of approval for all the other applications are all being wrapped up and are being carried forward, and we're not losing anything in the null and voiding.
Correct. There were no conditions.
There weren't any. So everything is now what we have.
Right. Was safe.
So where is the landscaping approved, landscaping plan? What does it show as a condition of approval? Yeah, so because I thought Pierre said that there was a landscaping plan approved. And, right, so that's why we have landscaping there. Well, we're carrying those plans forward. Forward for adoption.
Oh, sure. So I get that. I get.
But yes, the new, the site plan review 23-13 would include the original site plan approval and the approval of the landscaping. Yeah, making those applications null and voided. It's all, as you pointed out, we are binding them all into this site plan review. I'm dense on this. If that's true, why don't I see a landscaping plan requirement in here? Does this, does attachment one that we have before us this evening represent all of the conditions of approval in their entirety, both prior and in this thing?
Yes.
There were no prior conditions of approval. So again, it's a question, sorry for being dense. Where does, in what document does the requirement for the landscape maintenance agreement live? Where, for the landscaping plan, where does that live? And what is that being brought forth from? So, yes, you make a very good point. So what I would recommend we do is we would just cater. Because it's not, it's not an approval this evening, but we should state in here that Site Plan Review 23-13 will include the previously approved site plan and landscaping plan from Site Plan Review 1973. And then we should add a condition that the applicant is required to enter into a landscape maintenance agreement. Okay, so this will be condition 12. Right. And so you have the link. You might need to restate that. I don't know for, in terms of a motion. Just so we're clear on that here. I think you had it exactly right, but I was quite fast.
I have a question about the property ownership. So we have Bank of America. Here's our applicant and the property owner. Do we need to bring in the other property owner? That's, most landscaping's on the other parcel, correct? So do we need to have that applicant, make them aware and make them responsible for this landscaping, landscape maintenance agreement? Or because it's all part of the Bank of America project, they actually are responsible for maintaining the landscaping?
Well, you send a notice to the manager of that other parking lot parcel. If their landscaping is not consistent with the landscaping plan, the staff will then send the applicant a courtesy notice and it'll be correct if they don't bring the landscaping up to par. But that parking lot is, parcel is not afforded. So.
Right, so we're understanding. Because we're looking at the Bank of America.
Well, yeah, so actually, my question is, that parking lot, the second parcel parking lot, does not before us. It had its own approval, its own conditions, right? So let's say it has its own landscape maintenance agreement. That's not before us. It's a code enforcement at that point. But since this is before us, we need to make sure we get what we can get in here, which is enter into a landscape maintenance agreement. So we can do that.
For this parcel.
For this parcel, landscaping associated with this parcel. Then staff is just going to have to go back and look at the approvals for the other parcel and make sure that they're keeping the landscape up by whatever conditions were approved. And there may or may not be a landscape maintenance agreement as part of the approval of that parcel. So. There may not be. I know there probably isn't. So, as I originally recommended, I would recommend that it would be sort of a third paragraph under condition number one, spreading the project. And so this approval, that second paragraph, it lists one through four, the items that the commission is going to be approving tonight. And we've just had a little paragraph under that that the Site Plan Review 23-13 includes the approved landscaping plan or the approved site plan landscaping plan and elevations that are approved under SPR 1973. What was that number again? 1973? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's the date. So what, so this will be, under number one, this will be paragraph number five. Small Roman numeral five, right after Roman numeral fours.
I would think it'd be a third, it was a third paragraph.
Oh, it would be a separate paragraph, okay, that's all right.
Two, you have.
Okay.
Then. The just state.
So the, so SPR twenty three thirteen will include the approved site plan landscaping plan. Okay, so that goes there, and then number twelve, they will enter into a landscape maintenance agreement? That's where that goes? Okay. Did Vice Chair Keen use that all that right? Because I know you're going to make the motion. I don't blame you. Commissioner Smith?
If you could explain for me, the part that's not clear is whether we would be addressing these landscaping issues. There are two trees removed. What kind of trees are, could we replace them with? And the property owners are available in town, so it's not like here in Arizona, but most folks are around here.
Yes, the town is going to require that the trees be replaced with the same trees that had passed away, that are still there. Fine. The same. Or have been modified landscaping.
Yeah, so it's like if something dies simply, you know, it's late again, because that was in the original landscape. How was your sign?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Good. All right, other questions or comments? Okay, do I have a commissioner that is willing to put forward a motion? And it may be, start out initially awkward, as in what we plan as we go. Don't be afraid. Pep talk? A little pep talk here?
I will make a motion to, one, adult staff report is part of public record. And we make findings in support of SPR twenty three dash thirteen as follows. The request is exempt from environmental review under sequel guidelines, section fifteen, three oh one. At the project site, A P N zero zero three, one forty one, zeros, zero, one, is that? Sorry, stand by. About the A P N zero zero three, zero seven two, is that right?
It should be.
But it's, it's on the map, right? Right here.
Okay, so we'll change that. Then, so the project site, A P N zero zero three, zero seven two, dash zero three four, contains one story congressional office building, Bank of America, within the central business district. The property request is consistent with general design elements and the zoning ordinance, section ten four sixteen. The property is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of some ten four nine, ten four sixteen, and ten five fourteen, central business district. The approval is based upon the analysis provided in staff October third report to the planning commission and limited compliance with the project description and applicant's submitted package. And then we conditionally approve SPR twenty three thirteen. Oh, yes, that's right. For extra finding, as stated in the memorandum, the planning commission dated October third, that we find SPR nineteen seventy three null and void to be preceded by sheets L U three, L U nine, L U ten, and L U eleven of the plans submitted as part of this application. And then that we conditionally approve SPR twenty three dash thirteen, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and such as the record that the conditions are approved. Included in attachment one of the staff report dated October third, one twenty three, that we are going to amend to include in item number one, after the Roman numeral four, that SPR twenty three dash thirteen includes site plan elevation and landscaping plan from SPR nineteen seventy three. And then adding item number twelve, that the applicant will enter into a landscape maintenance agreement.
I have a motion, but I have a second.
Second?
A motion and a second discussion on the motion.
Definitely certification. The amendment made to condition one, as stated by the commissioners, the site and review twenty three dash thirteen will include, make sure that we're including the site obligations.
That is correct, don't forget those things, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Brennan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries on a board zero vote. There's a ten day appeal. Moving on then to item ten dash two, site plan review, Main Street lighting. Consideration of a site plan review application within the central business district zone. We want to install exterior string architectural string lights outlining all front roof lines of the buildings for all participating building property owners along Main Street from its intersection with Sacramento Street east of Bedford Avenue. To find the project categorically exempt from sequel guidelines fifteen, three oh one, and three forward recommendations to the city council for the same. And Pierre, you have the staff reports.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. I'll start with a little background. The El Dorado Community Foundation has secured funding for insulation, called architectural string lighting, which will outline all the roof lines of buildings along downtown Central Main Street commercial work. All property or building owners may choose to participate along the downtown corridor. And it will be from Sacramento Street, Bedford Avenue, as shown in figure one of your staff report. The general purpose of the architectural lighting is to enhance the architectural elements of the various buildings and invoke the emotions of the pedestrian experience by creating an ambiance. The staff will defer to the committee to determine what ambiance is and wish to achieve for our downtown area. The architectural string lighting, to be successful, must create a balance between the lighting and architecture. And staff emphasizes that the commission consider three aspects of the architectural lighting to deliberate this application. One is aesthetics, two, function, and three, efficiency. The project is intended to be a verification project, enhancing the downtown experience for residents, visitors, and shoppers. Up here. The rule of the project includes the following. Insulation of commercial grade outdoor string lights on the front facing roof lines of all participating buildings near Ten Kate Street, commercial corridor, from Sacramento to Bedford Avenue. Only those buildings with permission from the property owner would be included. The estimated length of the string, string lighting is about fifty five hundred feet. The lights to be utilized are LED, warm white C nine bulbs, and we've attached attachment A that has the specifications of lighting. The lights are to be attached to the buildings by either magnetic strands, clips, staples, or other architectural attachments, whatever would be necessary to secure, to properly secure the lights on the buildings. The string lights are intended to be maintained at least twice a year or as needed. The electrical power will be provided by a connection to the city map post and would be operated on a mob group photocell timer. So they would go on in the evening and they would turn off in the morning. Any existing exterior string lighting will be removed to allow for the installation of new lights. And any existing unconnected exterior string lighting will also be removed, either as part of this project or through code enforcement. And I'll go ahead and talk a little bit more about that as a background to that. So you probably recall that downtown Main Street was part of shooting of a, of a movie. It was called Christmas Bloody Christmas. And so all those Christmas lights were put together. Fortunately, when the film crew left, a lot of those lights remained on the buildings. And so they should have been removed. And so as part of this project, the contractor would remove those lights. And also as of late, it's kind of interesting, it's sort of, it's sort of like somebody, one business sees an owner do one thing, then they all participate. Be assigned in sort of this case, lights. We've had a number of business owners put lights without. And those exterior lights, for example, do need to come before this commission for approval. And so we have sent letters to a lot of those businesses that have installed their own lighting that may conflict with this project. But again, it is voluntary. And then again, any of that additional lighting without, before you, so you would have the opportunity then to look at that lighting in terms of, let's just say, consistency with this program, should this program move forward. The installation is to be performed by, this is the contractor, Lighted Up Holiday Lighting California. And they're, and it would be under contract with the El Dorado Community Foundation. Building facade string lighting is to be a permanent, a year-round exterior lighting project with lights being activated by those photocells only being on night. We did provide in the staff report some examples of, of insurance of what it should look like. I think those pictures from the Bat City. The Lighted Up contractor was used by the city of Westwood for the Main Street string Christmas lights that do zigzag over Main Street. So they are familiar with our town. Other local clients of this company include businesses in El Dorado Hills, Shing Springs, Candar Park, and Torino. And other cities in the region include City of Folsom, Granite Bay, Roseville, and Rockland. So they do a lot of these kinds of lighting. I'm sure many of you have seen this lighting in other downtowns. Staff is recommending the addition of one additional condition of approval, it would be number six. That, that would be the applicant shall obtain an approach permit through the city engineering department for any work that would be conducted within a city right of way, including sidewalk and street. So we wanted to include that condition where we will be best. There's been many times where contractors do occupy either the sidewalk or the street for, for a period of time and without an approach permit. And so in this way, it ensures that they consult the city to make sure that pedestrian safety and parking is, is considered as they install the lights. So with that, staff is recommending additional approval of the request as proposed and to include the additional condition of approval number six that I just read. And as recommended by staff and the, the planning commission put forward recommendation to the city council. And we do have a representative of the community foundation, Mr. Bill Robey, who was also here to discuss the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Pierre. Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to make one disclosure in the beginning. My parents own property, various properties for close to sixty years. After their death, I was a trustee for the property. The property was distributed last year. I have no interest in property in Main Street, other than my interest in the historic character and betterment of Main Street is well.
Thank you. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Keen?
Thank you. So who, who owns the project then? Is this the project, the applicant is the community foundation? So this is then their project? Or is this, this, will the city then inherit the project?
No, the city will not inherit the project. The project is between the community foundation and the owners of the private buildings. Though it's not to say that city-owned buildings could be included if, if the city chooses or the county ordinance could be included if they wanted to participate. So it's open now of buildings within that, within that downtown central Main Street. But the city would not inherit it. It's fully funded by grants, anonymous donors, and, and other sources will, will fund the project.
And does that grant the maintenance? It's just, it's stated they aren't, the lights are to be maintained and kept fully functioning and operational. So as far as city staff knows, there's plenty of funding to take care of repairs of, you know, wind damage, those kinds of things.
Yes, that is correct. And, and staff has had conversations with, with the contractor, Lighted Up, and, and they, and they explained that they typically do a maintenance several times a year, but they're actually looking at it as if, if they're not called or familiar or something. Because, you know, maybe, who knows, an animal or something that pulled on the wire, or there's some short, something of that nature. They will come out and, and repair that. So the lights are lighting good.
Okay, and so there's a final line. That condition of approval number two, city shall have the right to consider revocation of this permit should the string lights want to just repair. So that covers, you know, three, six, eighteen months down the line when there's wind damage, let's say. And it falls into disrepair. This is enforce, enforceable? As opposed to having, you know, we just talked about the landscape maintenance agreement on the previous project tonight. Do we need to have a lighting maintenance agreement? Or is this strong enough to ensure that the lights will remain, will be repaired if they fall into disrepair?
Yes, staff included this, this condition of approval for that, for that purpose. We don't, we don't see that happening, but you, you never know. Sometimes you include a condition of approval for the unexpected, but you know, make a point, you have a windstorm and for whatever reason, you know, a month goes by and nothing is happening and half the lights are off, and we would, we would cause enforcement. I would think this may be a good question with the, with Mr. Robey. Are, is, is there going to be any contract with the individual property owners? Because the individual property owners are ultimately responsible for the lights in the building.
So it's, it's a, okay, I see, a cooperative agreement, so that they when they approve participating in this program, they then take on the responsibility as well?
Yes, that is correct. And, you know, staff apologizes, I was hoping to have the time to reach out to Nevada City or some of the other towns that have hermit lighting. I think Scott is, you know, Folsom does. But I just didn't have time to do that and see how, how they handle that particular issue. So we included this condition. Be a bit strong.
They didn't give a light, a association by that, you know, a fund that, that goes in for lighting, lighting and landscaping agreements. So maybe that's something that those cities have been to do. So I see where you're going with that, an enforceable requirement to keep them maintained.
And it's not difficult to take down in my discussions with, with, with the contractor. Many of their projects are just for the Christmas season. Lights go up and then they come down. So they, as soon as they go up and once, once the season's over, they're ready to come down, the contract, they go, they remove everything. So, you know, staff is comfortable that they, they'd be able to come in and just remove the lights for whatever reason. If they were not functioning, if they were not functioning, and then the city decided not to have them. Okay.
You're talking about the string lights that went across?
No, those, those string lights do go up and they, they, they come down. I think they're up for a couple of months.
All right, yeah.
But these lights are, are to be permanent. They're being up indefinitely until something changes.
And so it's the city's intent to continue with the holiday lighting as well as this year-round lighting on the. well as, uh, this year-round lighting on the, the outline of the, the facades, so...
Right, and it's only the upper level of the buildings. One of the concerns staff had, well, sometimes, you know, late at night, there's a mischief. And so we want to ensure that the lights are, would be pretty much out of reach to people that maybe would want a hang of the, on the string lighting or something of that nature to cause damage to them. Um, but we're trying, if, hopefully, what's, what, what we're hoping for is, is we can get the lighting approved, so that the contractor can put the lights up in time for the, the our, our festival of lighting event. So we're a bit on the brush to get, to get that done.
Other questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I'd like to get a quick clarification about our specific role. Um, are we making a recommendation to city council, or are we actually approving the project and then that they also have to approve what we, and then, and then they can make their changes to whatever we put forward tonight? I just wanted, I was curious about our role, because it wasn't exactly clear. It says we're making a recommendation, but there were also condition of approval, so how does...
Yes, you would be making, if, if you were, uh, if your desire is to improve the project, you would be making a recommendation to city council to approve subject to the conditions of approval. So if, if this was a plan for an individual building, it would be, or decisions, a subpoena to the city council, but because of the, uh, scope of the project being the entire central downtown Main, Main Street area, uh, we, we wanted to take it to council for their as well.
Uh, my next question might be better, uh, for the applicant, but I, I didn't have time to broad check these addresses. How, um, is this every business, has every business opted to, uh, participate, or is there going to be gaps in this lighting?
Um, that's probably a question, uh, that should be, uh, here to Mr. Robey, but he, you know, we were hoping to get as many buildings participating as possible, just to ensure a better look. But again, it's purely, um, it's purely an option of the property of the building.
And, and that's, that's my concern, it dovetails with what, like, Mr. Keen was talking about, is that, you know, two, three months down the road, if we have...
Hold on, we, we haven't opened a public hearing yet.
Oh, okay.
When we knew that we're going to invite you, we're going to invite, we're going to have some questions for you, sir, so...
I'm just concerned that if every other building, just, you know, if this is under the size, they don't want to repair it, or if something happens, you know, this building is lit the next two more, and it's going to look terrible.
Right.
And that's where, I, I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner Keen, that we need to have some kind of a more effective maintenance agreement to address, um, the possibility of having just random lights over the roofs of half of downtown. And, uh, anyway, so that, we'll, we'll, we'll address that with the, with the applicant when we get to it. Um, let's see here. Also, I don't understand how, if a property owner does not participate, are we allowed to just run power across their roof? Because you can't just have an island of light on a building and have you... I just, I have, I guess, some questions, maybe Mr. Robey can address that one also, but we can't just compel a business to run power across their roof to light the next building over, either. It's just, I don't know if that makes sense, but...
It's only so many lamp posts.
There's only, and then, yeah, then you're attaching it across the sidewalk, at every, it seems like it's going to be a misport, but, uh, anyway, that's a good guess. Outside, uh, let's see here. Also, the, uh, the financial considerations aren't, that are per view, assuming, because there are, I mean, the, just the power alone, 2,500 feet of lights, 365 days a year, I'm assuming the city is just going to eat power consumption, but that's, is that outside of our purview? The city council had those a lot of financial stuff, I'm assuming.
Yeah, the city would handle it. Yeah, the city would handle that. If the lights are on, I don't know what the additional drawler is from, from these, uh, LED lights, or LED lights are very low in, in energy consumption.
I did some, yeah, especially for one, I think I have that question, so, um, or 10416, section five, address, addresses hours of illumination. All timing devices shall be required for all outdoor lighting fixtures in non-residential development, with off-hours between 11 o'clock PM and 6 AM. Exceptions are in here, but none of them apply to this project. How are we accessing the code for the hours of illumination of these lights?
No, the question was how?
Should, it seems to me by the code that we would require these lights to be off between 11 PM and 6 AM.
Yeah, the city can, can, but...
The city can make the exception, what I'm saying. City can make the exception.
If the city chooses to stay out during, during the holiday lighting, so this is acceptable.
But this is year-round, this is, I mean, I understand, temporary, there's an exception for temporary lighting for holiday purposes, but this is a permanent lighting display.
We could also recommend those, part of our actions, recommend that these, that lighting be subject to the, the existing city.
There wasn't something missing, that there was exempting this, specifically this project from the shared... Well, I guess a little off the subject, but it's not, you're going to be requiring these businesses to be lighting that's currently existing, so, uh, also, again, this code, there is an exemption, sorry, I lost my page in Hollywood, for holiday, for temporary lighting used for holiday decorations. So what is the permitting requirements for businesses in the central business district to do holiday lighting? It seems to be exempted in our code. We can't control if they want to put it for temporary purpose for holiday decorations.
True.
Okay, so they are allowed to put holiday lights out on their building for, for the holiday season at their strategy, without permits? Okay.
I may, I may, I may have picked up on that, that was one of my biggest concerns, too. Because in the staff report, page three, it reads, "Any existing unpermitted exterior string lighting." That is referring not to seasonal holiday lighting, but other lighting which is subject to code.
Correct.
So this project is not going to, because I was, I saw Scrooge coming in and taking away people's holiday lighting, and that's, that's not what this is talking about, but we're going to be, for example, is this, is this lighting in this window, does that require a permit?
Yes.
It requires a permit?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, okay, so, but, but that's an example, but that, I mean, this, that's a good point, I think. Here's an example of lighting. This is actually inside, but it's visible to the street, right? Is that why it would require a permit? Well, the city, okay, let's assume, let's assume this was Joey Beckdown at's Bakery Shop.
Yes.
Okay, so those lights would require, that decorative lighting would require a permit?
That's correct.
Okay, it's not seasonal, technically, it's, I think it's for, that color is, is for something, though. Cancer awareness, so that might get an exemption, right? It's a cancer awareness season or something. Okay, I don't want to, I don't want to get us down a rabbit hole, but...
I appreciate your notes, I want to get back to clarification, because I did have that question from, from the business owner about...
Yeah, thank you.
That, that they are still allowed for the holiday season without, so thank you for the clarification, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, question? Staff?
Yes, if you could, uh, help me out here, but I remember when there was resurfacing at Main Street, um, replacing, uh, water lines, sewer lines, there were about four workshops to ask the public what do they want, what kind of changes do they have in mind? And the subjective lighting came up four times in a row. People wanted more lights on Main Street. And then by the fifth session that was added, we found out that the reason it wasn't considered is because, as I recall being told, PG&E has those lights. They pay for it, not us, not the taxpayers, but PG&E pays for those lights. And that was the obstacle to adding more streetlights to provide more illumination of Main Street. Is my memory correct? Is that what...
I don't know. I would have to get back to the, get back to you, that I would know if there, if those lights are PG&E or City of Lights. I, I believe that the remaining lights are City of Lights, not PG&E.
One of the purposes, I guess, is aesthetics. It's going to look attractive, but how much of it can be to illuminate Main Street to provide more lighting? If you could, to use this photograph for illustration, do I understand that the lights would go up on their rooftops, like this, all the way across? Is that right?
It's like, uh, the Nevada City example, there was a picture, where, where, all right, see, uh, like, like Disneyland in some respect, like Main Street Disneyland. And you see these lights here, doing all this, that's what they're talking about? Okay, now...
That just confirms what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Which is, to use that photograph for illustration, it'd be the roof lines of those buildings we see in the photograph, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, what can be done to have lights on a lower level, like over the third floor of those buildings, so that there would be greater light on Main Street?
Yeah, this project doesn't look the lower level. It's only the, it's, it's meant to be, uh, to accent the architectural lines of the, the lines, or, uh, many of the businesses that sit out on these, and they have their, they have their own, their lighting, the light out there, outdoor dining, the storefronts and that, and this isn't, this is not a lighting project, it's by for lighting for, it's purely a architectural feature.
The other question is to ask you about, um, what with the feedback from people on Main Street, the merchants, because there's two merchant associations, did they review this project?
Uh, we left that up to the community foundation, is it to the outreach? Staff doesn't have that ability, and we're, we're short on time, so I'm not there to get the wording and talk with various businesses. That's not something staff has done.
Thank you.
Right, a couple of my questions have already been answered, and a couple, uh, I will direct to, uh, the representative this evening. Um, just, just, again, just to be clear, this is not going to, it's 365 days a year, right?
That's right.
Okay, three, and so it's, uh, every day, 365, which I do think costs do eventually add up. It will not compromise or eliminate existing seasonal lighting that, that we have, whether it's the lights across the street, or the decorative light that merchants can put up during the holiday season, right? So, I forget, that's what I heard.
Yes, that's correct.
And then we'll discuss the, uh, for those properties that don't participate, we'll talk about that. Um, and then I have some questions.
Yeah.
Okay, assuming no more questions of staff, we'll go ahead and invite the, uh, agent advocate of the El Dorado Community Foundation. Welcome, and, and I, I normally we allow you to present, but I, I'm asked, I'm going to ask you to first start off with, who is the El Dorado Community Foundation? Maybe your mission and all that.
Uh, thank you for the question. Uh, it's my favorite question. Uh, the El Dorado Community Foundation is the largest philanthropic organization in the whole county, uh, currently, where our assets are over $30 million. Those are divided between endowments and expendable accounts. Endowments are like a savings account, uh, that are invested. We spend some of the earnings back out to the community through our different funds. We have over 275 funds that serve the community. Expendable funds are like a bank account. Whatever you put in, it's spent back out in the headland. When I started at the foundation in 2007, the foundation was granting out $350,000 a year. Today, we're granting out $300,000 a year. So, uh, we serve the entire county, I don't know, from El Dorado Hills to South Lake Tahoe, down to, up to the Divide, and down to the South County. We are different funds, provide funding for youth development, older adults, uh, for families in crisis situations. When we have, uh, third of the county in evacuation, for a major fire, we provided funding for everybody that was under mandatory evacuation. So we really encompass a little bit of everything as a community foundation. There are 990 community foundations across the United States. Uh, we're one of the largest small-sized community foundations, the Aspen Community Foundation. The largest community foundation is the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, with, uh, the last time I checked, they were at a level of $2 billion in assets.
Thank you for that. And I have to admit, this is the first time I've heard of an organization that sounds like you're an asset. So before I open it up, uh, to my fellow commissioners for questions, it, is the impetus for this project coming from your foundation, or was the foundation approached by some other individual or group requesting this? I, I'm trying to understand the genesis of this.
Uh, the genesis was when the foundation, uh, when I started in 2007, we were located on Cedar Bank, in Little Cottage, and I felt it was very important to move the foundation on to Main Street, so that we were part of the community, and a part of the, the central business district. So, uh, through a relationship with a donor, that owned the building at 311, which is next to the Carrie House, uh, that conversation turned into, uh, the donor donating the building to the foundation in its entirety. Uh, it didn't have a mortgage, so there was no UBI and related business income that was going to be associated with the transfer over to the foundation. Our offices are there now. And looking at the building from the outside, it was, the army needed to be replaced, and it looked up, and there's a string of lights hanging down the building. And I was wondering what that was from, and I started to look down the street, and I could see the same sort of lighting on a number of other buildings. And, um, I started to incorporate some of the merchants on Main Street, what are those lights? At one time, there had been, the amount of lights of buildings on Main Street had been lit up, but they had fallen into disrepair. And that was really what started me to have the conversation with the city, uh, and that probably started, I would say, 10 years ago, uh, and having a conversation about how can we enhance, uh, the downtown environment of Pasovalle, that it was seeing those, those lights. And then over, especially with the source last winter, uh, we saw a lot more, it started to come on, some buildings, and I really wanted to have the conversation with, uh, with the city manager.
Thank you. Before we go on, I, I want to thank you for the clarity and brevity of your answers. They aren't, rest of the time, we ask people some questions and we get a lot of rambling, rambling, but I, I find your answers to be fairly succinct, I, so I, I, as a chair, I appreciate that. All right, so I'll open it up, uh, have you questions, more questions for the applicant, but I try to defer to my fellow commissioners first. So, Commissioner Keen?
Thank you, Mr. Robey. I'm going down here to answer questions, who was going to tell us? And as you can see, we have some, some concerns, but, but one of my, uh, concerns, uh, staff tried to address it, can you shed some light on who's responsible for maintaining these, uh, this funding stream? It's not clear to us, is this just money from the community foundation, or did you seek out, uh, an outside grant or to pay for all the lights? So let's start with that, on the string.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start at a much higher level than you have to, how this will actually work. The high levels, we have multiple funds of the foundation that we manage for individuals, for committees, for different community organizations and nonprofits. We also have, our own fund, that we have the, uh, in the eligible item, that the grants committee and the foundation, we also have, gambling that, a community resource fund. And it's from this community resource fund that we're utilizing the funding to move this project forward. And as a foundation, when we move forward in a project, we never walk away. That is something that, for me, is very critical. When we engage, we engage, we stay engaged. It is our reputation as a foundation, that, that we are a foundation of excellence. We don't let something fall into disrepair. We don't let a building fall into disrepair, we're not going to let this project fall into disrepair, or any of the things that we support emotionally.
Commissioner Keen, may I ask a follow-up question on this point? Would you, should the city, uh, think it in their best interest to do so, uh, would you be willing to post a bond? Have a bond posted to cover, if the city were to have to come in, something evil happened, but the city had to come in and, and actually spend money to make the repairs or do whatever, uh, there could be a bond posted that would cover those costs?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. Or we could, uh, establish a fund, uh, at the foundation to, um, be a reservoir for accessing in case any kind of repair needs to be done. That would also be utilized to pay the cost to the city for...
Great, thank you.
And the, the ownership, so the community foundation is going to purchase these lights and, and do the installation. Then, uh, what's the next step? Do you enter into, actually, the first step is to another question I had. So you provided all the APNs, properties. Have you done any outreach to, to get a sense of how many people want to participate? Let's, let's get to that question.
Yeah, but that, that's not something to do to, for me, uh, as a executive director of the foundation, it's not something to do. On the response of where we're gonna do these lights, the outreach that we do with the business community in Pasoval is on a weekly basis, and it's been going on for, since I've been there for seventeen years. So a lot of these owners I have relationships with, and we have had this conversation with a few of them about installing the lights, and, well, the feedback that we're getting has been very intensive. We have a meeting with the merchants association on the tenth, uh, which happens to correspond with the next city council meeting. So we're dividing the forces of the foundation staff to be at two places. So I'll be here and there'll be other staff members that will be with merchants association. Now the conversation with them as a group. We have already had a meeting with the downtown, uh, business owners, we invited them to a meeting at the foundation, office to go over this plan, uh, and other discussions about things that we would like to be able to do as a foundation to improve and beautify downtown Pasoval.
And what's your sense of, uh, you know, their enthusiasm? Do you think, um, is it a vast majority, is it half of the?
I think it's a vast majority. Anything that's gonna enhance that, that visitor experience, that's really what our business owners are, are looking for, is for people to stop, to have that experience, to shop and walk on Main Street. And conversations I've had with Cat Center and with Nevada City, they saw an increase in business after dark, once the lights are installed. So if there is an uptick, it feels a little safer, it has a little bit more of a celebration feel to it. So that is, uh, I mean, something that we're hoping we can be able to see here.
Now, have you, if you probably have come across, uh, property owners that, uh, doesn't want to do that, and what, what are their objections?
Uh, what? I haven't yet confirmed this, I haven't yet, that they have this objection specifically. I have confirmed, I've asked property owners, business owners, uh, that have a lot of questions around the festival lights and where the trees are gonna be placed, that seems to be quite a hot topic. But nothing for the lights.
So then, then, um, can I get back to my original question as well? So then, you've enrolled them in your program?
Yes.
So what's the next step to do? Are you going to have, um, some sort of, uh, maintenance agreement with them? Or, yeah, like, be track this over time?
Yeah. But, so that we'd be entering a agreement with each of the business owners and also with the city, uh, Pasoval. So we'd have an MOU in the city of Pasoval and an MOU with the business owners as well.
So you're gonna develop that MOU, well, with the property owners and it's spelt out? Who, who's responsible or where the funding will come from in the event that some damage occurs? So you, uh, you don't have that MOU as part of your package tonight, do you?
Yeah. No, definitely not, yeah.
I think I've, um, dominated, or, I'd like someone else to jump in and.
Commissioner Carter is heading to. Sure, thank you, Mr. Roby, for your answer to our questions, I appreciate it. I guess I was under the impression that this list of the addresses, APNs, and people that were already, have already agreed to participate in the program. You, you don't have a list of businesses that have already signed on to this or that are willing to participate?
Oh, we have just received a list from, uh, the city, uh, business owners who own the building, so we'll be, start, we just received that, I believe, today. And so we'll start to reach out. And then I'll be in for the next four weeks.
I, I guess the reason I ask is that, I mean, I understand that there, there's a sense of irreversibility on this, but I'm a little uncomfortable approving a project without even knowing where it's gonna go, and which buildings it's gonna be, who's gonna agree, who's not gonna agree. It seems like, uh, lacking a bit of information, um, no maintenance agreement, uh, developed. Uh, anyway, I just, I'm a little uncomfortable with the, with the, the amount of information provided to us tonight. But perhaps my fears can be assuaged with further conversation, but, uh, it would be good, I guess, to have that list for me to understand which buildings are gonna be lit, which ones aren't, before we approve a project.
And I do share your concern, um, to move into a project like this and have half of downtown lit or, uh, a quarter of downtown just would not be acceptable, I agree. It needs to be a vast majority, uh, otherwise it doesn't make sense to go through. So we really do need the business owners to agree to this before we would start to go through and sign the contract, we would have to have that in place.
To that point, if I may, Commissioner Carter, that point, it almost seems to me we have to have one hundred percent or no gaps in the middle. Because it's going like the proverbial.
Yeah.
You need to see an orthodontist kind of scenario, right? So, um, it, it, I think, and we can discuss this more to assuage. I think if, if that's a condition, or something directly to the council, that, look, as long as the, uh, the applicant, the foundation, they can get all of the businesses in, or at a minimum, ensure that there are no gaps, we have a majority of businesses, then, you know, I think that, that helps me a whole lot, but I think, you know, you know, one of our questions there is, well, what are we, what are we gonna do about gaps? Because that, that won't look good.
Okay, terrible.
So, and I think, so I think that's, that's a condition, I think, that we can, we can work in. It's absolutely, yeah. I would expect, I would not expect, I mean, you could have, you could have already done, done the work to have all the business, you know, given us the list of businesses, but you just now got that. You're, so you're basically saying, look, here's the project you wanna do, assuming we can get, uh, you know, all of these businesses in, or whatever parameters we set forth here in our, in our this little discussion, then this is what we want to be. And I, I think that's enough for us to, to act on.
Yep. I think this is good. But that's my concern, so, so. I think that's, for now, the question for the applicant.
Great. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Not so much the questions. It's a great idea. I think the one nice thing about that movie is that we saw what those lights would look like on Main Street, and it was very attractive. It gave a nice feel to, to the town. But otherwise, I would just echo the comments that made. I would feel much more comfortable knowing that we already had the feedback of people who making sure you didn't have gaps. So those are the views that come to my mind.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, I share that comfortability. So, uh, in order to be, to do something right, you have to do it a hundred percent, you don't do it at all. So, and, and everybody would have to, uh, or a vast majority would have to be one to say yes.
So, I guess I have just a couple more questions slash comments. Again, thanks for, uh, for being here. Since you are a private entity, you're probably not obligated to a competitive bid process. May I ask how the lighted up holiday lighting company was selected?
Yeah, how's the commission of the city of Pasoval?
Okay, all right. Because if it was a city, we'd probably have to bid it out, but, uh, all right. My, my, so conceptually, I like the idea. Uh, part of me also, it does, like, looking at the photographs from Nevada City, it does have kind of a Main Street Disneyland, uh, you know, apparent to it. But we're main, this is Main Street, right? That's kind of with the whole Disneyland, um, impression. What it's designed to do is to look like Main Street, USA, right? So I guess that's okay. I am concerned a little bit about, we haven't discussed fugitive lighting. We're always sensitive to how much light is setting into the night sky. Also, I share, uh, Commissioner Carter's concern about, uh, the lights being on from dawn to dusk. But that's easily resolved with a programmable timer. If he can do a photocell timer, you can do a programmer. And I, I would be inclined to require that maybe with some, some slight adjustment to the ordinance, we might allow a little bit longer window of opportunity, but, um, probably not much past midnight would be my sense. I guess, I guess that's it. I mean, I think, I think this is a great idea. I, I really do think the city frankly, Main Street, really benefit from this. I, I'm trying to envision it right now, we have this, this photograph, I, I don't think people at home can see it. But, you know, we're looking at the, the bell tower, and we're looking directly at the Old Town Center, the, and, uh, Central Coffee Shop here up, up to my left. And you, and if you envision the roof lines of the buildings with these, these decorative lights, I, I think it could be really striking, and, I think it'd be fantastic. And as long as we're not losing, you know, our other seasonal lighting and, and the strings across Main Street during the, the holiday season, so I think, I think it's good, so. If we don't have any other questions for Mr. Roby? Uh, don't run off, more questions may get, huh? Thank you, is there anyone else in the audience that may wish to, uh, speak on this project? All right, seeing that, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for those of public hearing and bring it back to the commission, uh, for discussion and, uh, action. Be a recommendation to the city council as to what they do. Does that recommendation be that we, we, we don't support, don't recommend, but I don't think that's where we're at, so. All right, uh, anyone wanna, Commissioner Carter, I see you right there.
I may just bring to the conversation about these addition, conditions that, kind of talked about here. I'm delighted to follow our code and have the lights be, might be out between eleven and six. I mean, I think we should follow the laws. So that would be my suggestion, that we do, uh, have a condition, that the hours of operation, that eleven PM to six AM. And that just comes directly from.
The code?
The, the code says six AM, so I'm just taking the, directly out of the city code and just.
I have some language in here, but, uh, I mean, the, the photocells would allow them to run during the daylight hours.
Exactly. Just off of the.
Yeah, no, no, my, my thought was, um, sorry, it's eleven, is the, eleven PM?
Eleven PM.
So I was thinking, um, dusk to eleven PM.
Yeah, that's.
Energy savings, I did do, to get the, the ambiance that we're talking about, but then to balance out with some energy settings, that's one I was considering. It's actually, uh, hold on, or. That would be in favor of, um, let's see, eleven PM to dusk, they would be off.
I, I'd be supportive of. I'd be supportive of being a little bit generous as to kind of, for the, for this kind of project, but, you know, it's not a hill to die but, you know, we want to. You know, frankly, we have businesses that are open until two AM, right? Particularly on Main Street, we have, we have bars that are open till two AM. And that's, that's, that's a safety feature, if nothing else, I.
But this isn't safety lighting, this is.
It's not, sure it's not, but it, it, you know, there's a vibrancy, that, that's one, that's one comment I wanted to make, to Mr. Roby, and since he's here, we can hear the comment. I do think this lighting does add vibrancy. And you can look at those photographs of Nevada City, and I, and I think it does say vibrant. And so if this, if this works, as I think people are thinking it will, Main Street will become even more active in the evening hours. And, you know, then if we have establishments that are open until, you know, two AM, and some remain might even be open later, that. So I would be willing to be a little bit relaxed on this, but I won't die on this hill. City council already has the ability to allow dusk to dawn, so. But, but I, I just wanna get that in there, that I, I do see kind of an exception, uh, to the code with, with this. And these lights are, are actually serving a purpose, and a purpose for the city, a bit, it's a benefit of the city, so. And I keep looking this way, I don't mean to ignore you, if you have, which is, okay. So, all right, and I'm just jumping in there for that.
Okay, then, second, we talked about this establishment, but Mr. Roby mentioned the MOU of the city. At least be in, um, for a recommendation, this is all we're doing, is recommending this to the city council. And so I, I would like to include that recommendation to the city council, that they establish some kind of a maintenance agreement, program, however that shakes out.
Right, qualify, I think, Mr. Roby mentioned, I think that's where they're headed, but I agree just.
Between who's?
Between the city and the building, or the, or however the city council decides to establish.
And city, so it's a, you know, MOU, all the interested.
I would like to have some kind of the.
So three parties, three parties to an MOU, the city and the foundation.
So Mr. Roby.
And then the building owners as, as a program, okay? So, what are you, uh, what are your thoughts on, uh, having a bond or some other instrument to, uh, cover, um, the, the city in case the city had to put out money to do repairs?
Well, I, I see where you're going with that, but, um, it's only, I, I guess I'm more familiar with the community foundation and, um, that they, they do, uh, Mr. Roby, which they have in their various funds. And so I have confidence that, uh, if the MOU is enforceable, that there will be, funds will be made available so that the city, and maybe that would be part of the MOU, is that the city is, uh, not obligated, that, uh, all of the maintenance or the repair has to happen either on, by the building owner, building, with the community foundation, take the city's liability out of it.
Right, but at the end of the day, we wanna make sure the city can be made whole. I mean, if the city should find itself for, I think, right, you can't, you can't, you know, uh, come up with the circumstances, it's, it's insurance, right? So I'm just saying that, and, and Mr. Roby said, yeah, we're, we're willing to.
Yeah, I'm sure that the city attorney will check, to, to protect, uh, the city, so this is a, a project between the building owners and the community foundation, that the city is a partner. The city attorney, I'm sure, will, uh, make sure that, you know, the city is protected, is that, so does, uh, but I, you know, appreciate where you're coming from, I.
Yeah, I, 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 I think you're, I think there's wisdom in, in the city, the city's gonna look at this and say, what, what's our exposure? And how will we be protected? Um, what, what, what's our thought on, on the whole concept of fugitive lighting, though? You know, we're, we're, I think rightfully, we try to minimize fugitive lighting, and, and if you look at these pictures of Nevada City, I mean, this is, this is pretty cramped, right? And, and so I don't know, and I don't know what to do about it, because I, and I still like this.
I think what, and Mr. Roby correctly have a problem, I think what project is gonna look more like is the lower of the two photographs from the staff. So it's just gonna be on the very top of the building, not running down. One of my concerns was conflicting with the, the bell tower. That, talk about unique, I mean, sense of place is our bell tower already, uh, we have our lighting. And I was a little bit concerned when I saw the top picture, which is, yes, looks like a, a, a church tower and all sides are, are lit up, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't like that, because we have the bell tower. But when I look at the other photo and understand more about this project, um, you know, I think the, um, the darkest guy, I don't think the dark sky is that impacted by these, um, the placement and also the type of lighting that's being proposed, it's actually fairly low.
And the kind of approval could be that the lighting shall be restricted to the, uh, how do I describe this? The building edges? The, the roof line, the building roof line edges, and it won't, I like in the top photo, it's not gonna go down. Not gonna, Kristen, are you moving to your mic?
Sure, if I may, unless.
Microphone, I can't hear you.
Sure, if I may, unless, um, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask a question, but the lighting is supposed to be the, the roof line, so. That, that's correct, the top photograph there is, is, lighting would not go down to the ground. The bridge on there is definitely more like the, the picture on the bottom.
So a condition of approval that would be appro, it'd be okay to have that condition of approval? Oh, sure, just for clarity, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's in the first, I just found that, in the staff report, outline the roof lines of the building. So that's, um, that's specified in the staff report. So that's, that's specified in the staff report. Specified. So it's very clear what is, you know. Oh, okay. So now Duncan is maybe under point one of that.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dan, for interrupting. Going back to the jet of one, it really outlining all front roof lines. It's in, it's right in the first, second line of the first sentence.
All front.
Item one.
Okay.
All front roof lines. So there we go. We're covered.
I think it's the last thing, the participation gaps in the buildings. Make sure the wording, the, the, the effect of participation or gap.
I would say project consultation will require. We've got two things. One is the majority of businesses, right? And I'll specify that, but certainly there cannot be any gaps, right? I mean, I.
I think we could have gaps. I, you know, I don't want to hold back the whole project from that. I was looking as we were talking about that. Probably the other, the other photograph does have some, some gaps. I think we could tolerate it, but what I'm hearing from Mr. Robey is that if that's, if he understands that the, the whole aesthetic would be compromised if we didn't have, it, it's not a straight line. It's, you know, an interesting line in it. So, you know, I think a hundred percent just seems like.
So not, okay, I, I, I won't say a hundred percent. So if you have, if you have, let's say, ten percent on each end of, of Main Street, wherever the project is intended, that don't participate. Well, that's not as big a deal than if you have that same ten percent interspersed throughout the entire project area, right? So, because you won't, you won't notice it if, if this ten percent is dark, this ten percent is dark, but the rest is all lit up continually. That's one thing. But if I take that same twenty percent and then now I intersperse it through the entire project, I, I think it'll look disjointed. I, I think we, that needs to be, again, we're recommending this to council. I, I don't think the project will be successful and will achieve its intent if, if we have those gaps.
So how could we, relevant in setting a percentage of business owners participating, say that insulation has to be continuous?
Contiguous.
Continuous.
Yes, it has to be contiguous without interruption.
Good suggestion. He's already told you that he sees the necessity to have a hundred percent. He doesn't need advice of marketing information. I think that he'll be able to do that. What we can do is just simply provide our sense of this body that we urge that it be done with a hundred percent participation and leave it to the applicant to see to it that that's done. I guess the other suggestion I'm going to make to you folks is, and again, nobody needs my, no advice from me on marketing this project. But if you see that movie, no matter what you think of the rest of the storyline, any of that stuff, or bloody Christmas, et cetera, the scenes of Main Street with that kind of roof lighting that peers told us is still up there is extraordinarily charming. That sells the project. So if you can get permission from the producers, the owners to get those segments, that sells it because it's beautiful. You can almost hear Bing Crosby in the background. It's that nice. So I guess I feel much more comfortable just expressing a sense of the body that we believe that a hundred percent participation is needed and leave the rest up to the applicant. The last thing, I don't mean to be discouraging anybody, but just given my background growing up in small business, where my father talked about liability and all that all the time, is down the road, what happens if there's a fire caused by the wiring on some roof line? You know, some rats or, or birds up there are chewing away, you know, what happens? Some of the roofing material might be, and that location we're looking at has been destroyed by fire many times from eighteen fifty to present. It's just a thought. I don't want to put cold water in that idea, but.
Put cold water on the fire. Put cold water on the fire.
Yeah. I would want to put cold water in that, and I don't think I have to do. So that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. In, in response to that, I, I think that, well, I take the applicant at, at his word and I, I have no reason to doubt it. I still think nonetheless, when we do these types of things, where our, our job, our responsibility is to set parameters. And so I think, I think no gaps in this is, is a parameter. And, and that to me, that to me is, is a far more important parameter than the percentage of participation. Well, I think you need to get at least fifty percent. Okay, I'll just, I'll just throw fifty percent out there. I think it's a very low bar. You get fifty percent, good. You get fifty percent, all continuous. I'm sure he will not be satisfied with only fifty percent. But I think that continuity, the uninterrupted continuity, the one is essential. I wouldn't be able to vote affirmatively without something. I'm seeing Commissioner Carr make a request.
The other problem I had with the project is we don't have a lighting plan for downtown. You know, we've talked about the seasonal string lights and now we're adding this element, but that's not really what's before us.
This becomes a de facto lighting plan.
That does come close, I think. You know, I don't know if anything will, but. What I don't want to have happen is for it to look confused and not, in a little sense of place and, and what's going on. Sometimes when you have too much lighting, I think, well, these are really pretty nice pictures that are in the staff report. You know, these, these are charming foothill towns, but I don't want to, I don't want it to become a confused mess. I mean, we, we kind of saw some examples of that with advertising in the presentation tonight. So you, you know, just kind of move that over to, to lighting where you've got this kind of lighting and the, you know, the street lighting, the crisscrossing that we've got. And then, well, that's temporary. I, I just don't, I don't want us to get into a point where we were actually ruining the aesthetic of our downtown, but.
This lighting is all going to be the same.
And this, this is.
You know, if, if they are minimal L and Ds, so I, I mean.
And I think it will go well with what we have too.
Yes, I do too. I think it's common. So. I'm comfortable throwing out a motion.
Cheryl, so. Since we are. Taking the call of the action, as outlined in our staff reports, staff reports thirty three six, that we're going to take these following actions forwarding a recommendation to the city council for all projects described in a lot of statements that we're thinking and reading. Adopt the staff report as part of the public record and make the following findings in support of S P R forty three dash fifteen, including that this request is exempt from environmental review under C Q, section fifteen three oh one. The project is located on downtown Main Street, starting Sacramento Street to Bedford, and includes the listing of all the A P Ns and addresses in attachment three within the central business district in downtown Placerville. The project request is consistent with the Placerville general plan community as a high element of bold B. Project request is consistent with the purpose, intent and criteria zoning orders. Ten dash four dash nine, site plan review, ten dash four dash sixteen, exterior lighting regulations, and ten dash five dash fourteen on the central business district zone. And the approval is based on the analysis provided in the staff's October third, twenty twenty three report supply commission and limited compliance with project description and the applicant's supplemental package. Conditionally approved S P R twenty three dash fifteen, located downtown Main Street, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated October third, twenty twenty three, with some minor amendments, as we have discussed tonight. Going to attachment one, approval, number one approval with S P R twenty three dash fifteen to install exterior architectural string lights outlining all front roof lines of the buildings for all participating building property owners along Main Street from its intersection with Sacramento Street to Bedford Avenue and remove existing exterior string lighting to allow for the installation of the new lights. That has two subpoints, site plan review application, light bulb specification. Now, under number two, project operation and maintenance, I would like to add that the operation that recommend the city council limit the operation of those lights from dusk to dusk to midnight. I was going to say eleven P M., but deference to what Commissioner Fran pointed out, dusk to twelve, to midnight. To allow for a little bit, just a little bit of energy savings and give us back more of the dark sky. Add another point regarding the maintenance. Well, let's there, number two. So let's go ahead and add this. The string lights, wires, appearances are to be maintained in and kept fully stepped in and kept fully functioning and operational. We will recommend that the El Rondo Community Foundation will establish an, an M O U with the owners of the buildings and with the city that defines the obligations for maintenance and repair. Okay with that? And then number three, site plan, per expiration of changes for six, okay, and no other changes to the recommended conditions of approval, except for adding under number six, staff recommended that in addition to saying that the applicant is responsible for obtaining a billing permit prior to lighting installation, the applicant is responsible for obtaining an encroachment permit for work within the city railway. So. Did I capture what we need to have? Thank you. Okay. So that would be part of condition number six. And adding one more condition, eight. The installation should be in continuous runs of light with no breaks in continuity. Does that capture?
But it's, it's caused by non-participating property owners. Resulting, as a result of non-participating property owners.
Okay, so result of non-participating property.
From non-participation by property. That's how it's better. Non-participation by property.
Okay. Yeah, I think that. See, it'll just be part of our recommendation. That, that is our framework, sort of the, the appearance, the aesthetic. Once again, a very messy motion.
And a motion, is there a second? Terrible second for a purpose of discussion. I'm going back up. I can't remember which item you added under the M O U.
I put it under two.
Can you read the language for me again, what you wrote?
The El Rondo Community Foundation will establish an M O U with the owners, with the building owners and with the city that defines the obligations for maintenance and repair.
Okay, so it says that it should say participating owners or some reference of participating somewhere.
Participating.
So since I made that, that's a friendly amendment made by the second of the motion. So I assume that you, that's just a clarification. We don't need to get. Any other discussion on the motion?
I'm, pardon me, I'm not sure exactly how to go about, but I, I still, maybe I'm losing into this, but I, I really do believe that the eleven o'clock number should be the one that we use. It's in, it's codified in our code. I believe the city should have to follow the same rules that our business owners do. I, I don't, I don't like the appearance of do as I say, I as I do. So I, I really would like to see that eleven o'clock number just because it is the law that those lights are supposed to be going out. And I, in deference to the, the chair's opinion, I understand that it would be nice to have it on until midnight. But I really do believe that the city should follow its own rules and do what we ask our business owners to do or what we're required to. That's what I should be saying. So.
I think that's, that's certainly a reasonable position to take and, and I don't disagree with it on the premise. At the same time, this, I think it could be argued that this is also an enhancement for businesses if the businesses don't have to pay for it, right? So this is, this is a value added, this is a little value added. And so going a little bit beyond the, what would be the typical requirement of our own ordinance isn't necessarily unreasonable. And perhaps we could rewrite that to say the hours will be, shall be consistent with existing ordinance. Hours of operations would be consistent with existing ordinance with the potential consideration for an extension should the city see fit, because at the end of the day, the city is going to, going to make that decision. That, what that does is it recognizes the ordinance, our approval is for the ordinance, but we're communicating the city that the city may for this, may want to consider the exception. And the city does exceptions for things, right?
Too often.
Okay, fair, fair enough. That's, that's another one. But that, that way we can kind of soften it. Mr. Smith?
I guess I'd say that I agree with both of you in the following way. First, yes, if it's in the rules, we should follow the rules. However, the city could change, could change that ordinance. And it seems to me that they may well want to do that for reasons and, and in ways that are beyond what you described. For example, you talked about bars being open, but that's usually the weekend. So the hours can, can vary. And there's no reason for us to cement now what would be the need later on. It's bound to be different. I haven't looked at what the nightlife is like downtown on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and assume that it's not the same thing on Monday or Wednesday, but I don't know. So it just seems for flexibility that we could shape it as, keep it the way the ordinance is with the suggestion that the council could modify it as a function of the program.
I'd be happy to support that word.
So, so say, say the wording again, because I, I didn't.
Well, we're agreeing with Commissioner Carr. That's what the ordinance now requires.
Right.
However, we're offering language that says that the council may choose to modify the schedule as the circumstances may warrant.
Let me, because I think that's kind of what I, I said a moment ago.
Exactly.
And, and you may, you may write it as the council may determine that the benefit of this project warrants an extension beyond the, the limits set by ordinance, something like that. Because that's really, again, that's simply pulling the council's nose over the, hey, you know what? We're, we're following the ordinance, but you may, you may look at this, you may look at this a little bit different and say it deserves, or the benefit may, it could provide, may warrant something else. We're still within the ordinance, right? So you're good with that. You can live with that. I, I can live with that too. And the maker of the motion will live with something along those lines, that language.
Hours of illumination.
Shall be consistent with the ordinance. To be consistent with the lighting ordinance.
With the city ordinance, city lighting ordinance, or can be modified for city council discretion.
Yes, that's good enough. I think that's, I think that's the spirit, that's the spirit of the discussion. Any other discussions or possible amendments? Good job, Commissioner. I guess we'll go ahead and roll call vote, please. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Matt, motion carries for, but nothing, I don't think it's appealable because it's going to the city council. Mr. Roby, thank you so much for your presentation and answering our questions. I think unanimous here that we think this project, if done correctly, and I'm sure that's what you want, it could be a real benefit to downtown, so hopefully we'll see it in short order. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, can we continue on or we need a break? I'm happy to continue on. Just a five minute break, five minute recess. Pierre, are you ready? We need to wait for Kristen or are we good?
Yeah, she, she should be back.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and reconvene and go slow. Item 11, continued items, we have none for this evening. Item 12, new business, again, we also have none for this meeting. Item 13, matters from commissioners and staff. Pierre, you want, you have anything on your side of the House that you want to offer to us?
Yes, I have two items I'd like to report to the, to the commission. We are hopeful we will have, and we'll take all the required agreements and documents to the foster title in Sacramento, and we will close on the construction loan with the merchant bank for the construction of the Middletown Mallard Ford Waltons in apartments.
Great.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. As we, you know, we spoke with the bank and everything's looking, looking good.
Okay, great. That's really, really good news.
Yeah, and then I did receive a phone call from the property owner that owns some property off of Forty Road, and this is, this is below the large property that's on the top of the hill, say that's adjacent to the In-N-Out.
Yes.
So there, he has been in contact with that other hotel builder applicant and looking at joining forces and hopefully putting a hotel packets together. So we're happy to hear that. Hopefully, when we meet with them, then we'll see something moving forward.
That's great.
I have nothing to report yet on the back end of the, I think they're just, you know, waiting on, working on finances and interest rates and that kind of thing. We're still hoping they'll move forward their building plans essentially.
Right, good. That, that would be great project, what we get that. Kristen, do you have anything from staff, meeting wise?
Yes, so the notice of public hearing went out for October 17th, so we will have a meeting then. We anticipate having meetings except for on November 21st and January 2nd at this point.
No meetings those days?
Those will, are tentatively red. And I can repeat those dates. It's November 21st and January 2nd.
Anything else from staff? 13-2, planning commission matters. I'll do for commission members to update other members, and let's go right to 13-2.1, our special committee story. Commissioner Carter?
Yes, due to me being on vacation and completely out of service for almost the entirety of the time between the last two meetings that our committee did not meet, we do hope to have, actually, we plan to have a draft of the list of priorities that the chair asked us to put together. We should have something to, for the commission to discuss at our next meetings. We could start bringing together mutually some priorities and start to establish a high level that we can drill down on. So hopefully we'll have something good for you guys to kind of help us figure out what the priorities are, and we should have something for you guys to discuss on that at our next meeting.
Is that for October 17th?
That's for October 17th.
So to staff, when, when do they need to have that view in order for publication?
I don't think that it needs to be noticed.
Right, I don't think this.
We are actually going to try to get you packets earlier for this meeting. So rather than Thursday, it will be Tuesday. So if I could have that information. I can send an email.
Email me. What my dad is.
The Monday, the big packets are supposed to come out, so maybe next week.
If that's, if that's not due, would it be appropriate for the committee to present that during, at this point, 13.2, for us to maybe take home?
It does need to happen.
If we could agendize it for the next meeting, or is that?
Oh, sure. Or, I mean, we can go to 11:21. I mean, I would rather have it done well than done rushed.
It doesn't need to be an official document for the conversation between the commission. I mean, I can print out what we consider to be a list of priorities to discuss with you guys to put them in order, but I don't necessarily know that it needs to be an informal document. Like, this may be staff, it'll be that, but I just, we just have a conversation based around a set of priorities that we can put into some kind of a.
I would, I would. Because I, I, this adds legitimacy to the work, frankly, from my perspective as the chair. I, I would like to see a memorandum from the committee to the chair and the members of the commission and say, here's what we think or something. It doesn't have to be lengthy or, I mean, if it's just the list, but I think it should come on a memorandum, you know, with a letterhead and, and then, so if, if October 17th is too tight of a deadline, I don't think we lose anything by going into 21st. So, so give yourself the time you need to do.
And we also, it needs to be agendized so that the public.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Without question, yeah. And I think, I think if there, if, if we're going to have priorities to be discussing, I think those should be in written and the public should be able to. Commissioner Smith, you're, I was going to.
I agree. You're saying that it's quality over time. We all agree. So if we're able to provide a written project and have that product available for Kristen to serve, you've got it. If not, it gets pushed off.
Great.
But it'll be done properly.
Super. Anything else you want to add on the committee's work or? All right. Then any of the commissioners have any other information for the good of other commissioners and public staff? Oh, yes, thank you. To staff, with regards to the city manager preparing an action plan or action items for, based upon our joint meeting, I would only request that you ask if that can come to the commission for input perhaps before it goes to council, so we have an opportunity to provide our input to it as well.
It'll be the planning staff or you'll need this.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be.
And you'll bring it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So it'll be, we'll see. Okay, super. Okay, great. Thank you for what you did. Okay, great. Thank you so much. And then this Saturday, October 7th, is the Main Street Oktoberfest. Yours truly will be the Burgermeister and tapping the ceremonial keg. So if you want to see me parading around in lederhosen with a big keg strapped around his belly, I think the festivities start at 3:00. Hey, if there's no other business, then we are adjourned 8:46:03.
Interesting.
Obviously.